Okay, I'd like to call the June 11 Amherst County Council Meeting to Order. First order of business is everybody please silence their cell phones. And then we're gonna... Next item after that is we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Watts will lead us in an invocation. If you're uncomfortable with either, you may step out and Captain Robinson will retrieve you and bring you back in once we're finished. So follow the right.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where its stand is, where all nation under God and in his law, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to conduct people's business. Lord, we ask you to guide us in all of our decisions and let your will prevail in everything we do here tonight, Lord. Lord, I ask for the safety of everybody here. I'm blessed that everybody that showed up is here. Lord, just give everybody safe passage home in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. Next item is the public hearing for the FY25 Budget Amendment. Ms. Morgan?
So the code Virginia states that any time your budget goes, your originally adopted budget goes a long percent of your expenditure, you have to help with budget amendment. This was advertised, I will point out that the numbers that were in the advertisement were incorrect, but the numbers you have in the ordinance in your packet are correct. This budget amendment includes the invoices for the construction of the maintenance shop that was approved last year, but because of the delay in construction and the way the invoices cost, we actually take those this year. So the budget amendment includes appropriation for the maintenance shop addition, the sludge disposal expenses that y'all actually approved in September of last year, as well as about $5,000 for PD CJS grant funds that we received throughout the year.
So I will open the public hearing. Does anybody... Captain, does anybody want to speak for the public hearing?
Just comment period.
Okay.
Does the public hearing affect this?
I don't think there's anything.
Okay, I still need it. All right, nobody's commenting. Any members of council who'll comment? That, no member of council, we can go ahead and roll on this tonight, right Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Motion.
I got a motion from Mr. Watts, may I have a second? Second from Mr. Martin, any discussion? Mr. Driscoll? Mr. Watts?
No.
Ms. Sweeten?
Yes.
And Mr. Martin. Vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes.
As a point of clarification, I would just like to clarify that you are voting on the budget ordinance, so the budget ordinance will take care of both the actual budget numbers and the appropriation. Mrs. Morgan?
Gotcha. Vote, Mr. Martin? Ms. Sweeten?
Aye.
All right. And motion is carried 3-1-0. Next item is a banner request from Mr. Randy Nixon from Amherst County Parks and Rec.
Good evening, Mayor Tuggle, Mr. McGuffin and Town Council members. Good to see you this evening. I know some of you, some of you probably never met me. I am Randy Nixon, I am the Recreation, Tourism and Cultural Development Director for Amherst Been there now for, as director, since May of 2022, and been in the recreation business for 31 years. So anyway, just want to give you a little intro of who I am. Currently, we are trying to put together a, an event out at Mill Creek Lake. The county's really trying to make Mill Creek our tourist attraction for the county and the town. One of the things that, to me, is important is the fact that anybody that goes to our lakes, they have to go through the town to get to our lakes unless they're coming from Buena Vista area. So it's a focal point, the town is a focal point for the... I'm getting a little sidetracked from the banner, but some of the things we're doing, the Kilgore property was, I know that's been a sticking point, but the county now has it, we've got it in our master plan to provide amenities there. So we're really trying to work with the town to make some of these happen. We also have the little park, the Schrader House, that we're gonna try to incorporate into a nice park. We've worked with Ms. McGuffin, got some of her comments and other folks in the town to try to make those things happen. And one of those things is people want more events in the area, and that's why we're doing the Day in the Park, which is July 26th, Saturday, July 26th. Some of the activities we're gonna have in that is we're gonna have a bouncy house, we're gonna have a DJ, we're gonna have kids fishing lessons, we're actually gonna have a sensory tent, we're having a guided painting of the lake, our Amherst Art Society's gonna come out with tables and we're gonna put tents in up, and they're gonna provide canvases for people. They're gonna do instruction and paint the lake, people wanna paint the lake. We're gonna have food trucks, we've got the hot dog lady, we've got a Doc's Kitchen, the snow of the south, I'll see if that's the snow cone. So it's gonna be a great opportunity. I don't know how many of you go out to Mill Creek Lake where we have the swimming and our jump swing, it's packed. One of the things that we've had to do is put park attendants out there, which they're out there seven days a week from Memorial Weekend through everyday weekend from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So we're trying to make it a place that people can come and hopefully come through Amherst, stop and maybe grab dinner, grab ice, grab gas, whatever it may be. And that's what we're trying to do. And as the tourism director, I'm really starting, getting ready to start to make some changes. Just so you know, Leslie Sprouse is here, she's our grants administrator, she and I have been working on this event with staff and several other people. But we really want to try to really start marketing Amherst, and that's just not Amherst County, that's the town of Amherst as well. We think it's very important to get people to come to Amherst, we have a lot to offer. Now, I hear some people say, "Oh, there's nothing here." Well, there's a lot here. You've got rivers, you've got lakes, you've got parks, you've got the national forest, you've got mountain biking. I mean, there's so many things that are here, and of course, we're not like Bedford and have the D-Day Memorial and some of these other things, but we do have some good quality things here. You have a nice little quaint town with some great businesses. Like I bought a bunch of stuff from Hills Hardware the other day, so... But, you know, it's really a great place, and we want to help make it that way. And this is an event that we feel like will help promote that, and this is an event we want to do annually. And so we'd really like the banner to help promote that event, because we want, not just town folks and county folks, we want people coming from all over, and that's how we're trying to advertise this event, more of a kind of a tourist event so people know that we're here. And I hope that you'll approve the banner and help us out in that. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nixon. Ms. McGuffin, would you like to enlighten the council on the last sentence of this request?
Yes, you have a banner policy, and so normally you don't see any of the banner requests, because your banner policy allows those requests to go through Ms. Hunt, and she takes care of doing the VDOT permitting. But your banner policy says specifically that that process is for events that are either in town or at Sweetheart College. So we just wanted to ask council to make this approval since it is outside of your standard banner permit, and all we're looking for is a motion to approve this, and Ms. Hunt will work with the county to get that approved over at VDOT.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve this request.
I'll make that one.
I have a motion from Mr. Watts, can I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Sweeten, any discussion? Mr. Driscoll? Ms. Sweeten?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Martin. Okay, vote, Mr. Driscoll?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carried 4-0-0. Go forth and make a Great Lake Day. Next, next item is citizens' comments. We have Ms. Robin Davies, she's representing the Amherst County Lions Club.
Yes, thank you. And I first stood here two years ago to ask your approval for a wellness fair. We've had the first and the second, and I'm now asking for your approval for the third annual Amherst County Wellness Fair, which will be held at the high school on September The Lions Club is in partnership with the Amherst County Department of Parks and Recreation, as well as the Amherst County Public Schools. And as you can imagine, the fact that we're doing it for a third time validates the fact that this was something that the county really needed. We've brought together healthcare providers, people to talk about nutrition and diabetes and blood pressure, as well as athletic events and social events, and it... We all had a great time, and we're looking forward to being able to do it again. Does anyone have any questions about the Amherst County Wellness Fair? September 20th, yes, Saturday, September 20th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. No, I'm sorry, 10:00 to 2:00 p.m., there we go, four hours at the high school. And I invite you all to come and participate. It just, it's a wonderful event. And one thing we learned this year that we never expected was that the folks who were providing services appreciated the opportunity to talk to each other so that they knew, you know, if they had a client who needed something, they now knew somebody that they could reach out to.
Okay, you're getting ready to run out of time, but a quick question, so what are you asking from us?
Just your permission, I will have, I will file the form for the, for VDOT. At this point, I don't know whether or not I'll actually need it, actually didn't need it last year, but I just want your permission to have Ms. McGuffin sign the form if we need it.
It comes before council due to the potential closure of Lancer Lane, because Lancer Lane is a VDOT road. Anytime we talk about a public road closure, that needs to get a signature from the town.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
So I will entertain a motion to go forward with this, if needed, the request for Lancer Lane.
Can I make that motion?
Have a motion from Ms. Sweeten, can I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Driscoll, any comments? Mr. Martin, Ms. Sweeten, and Mr. Driscoll. Vote, Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Sweeten?
Aye.
And motion carried 4-0-0. Next is the consent agenda, I hope everybody's had time to review the town council minutes. If nobody has any corrections or deletions, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Make that motion.
Okay, Ms. Sweeten makes the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Driscoll, is there any discussion? There being none, vote, Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Sweeten?
Aye.
And Mr. Watts?
Aye.
And Mr. Driscoll?
Aye.
Motion carried 4-0-0. Next is the check approval, each of you have a copy of the check register. Any questions about any of the checks? Being none, I will entertain a motion to accept the check register as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Motion for Mr. Watts, can I have a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Sweeten, any discussion? Mr. Driscoll?
No.
Mr. Watts?
No, sir.
Ms. Sweeten?
Aye.
And Mr. Martin. Vote, Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Sweeten?
Aye.
Mr. Watts?
Aye.
And Mr. Driscoll?
Aye.
Motion carried 4-0-0. Each of you have your staff reports, they're attached, and other reports, the planning commissioning met on the 24th, um, excuse me, on the 4th, the minutes are attached, the EDA met on June 2nd, those minutes, Robert E. Lee, Soil and Water, anything?
Haven't heard anything from them.
Okay. Next, the discussion items. First item on the agenda is an appointment of an interim town council member. First of all, I would like to say, we had five people, applicants, for this position, which I know all of us were very surprised and very pleased. All the applicants were well qualified, would make a fine council member, and we appreciate everybody's interest in wanting to become on town councils, and we know it's for the betterment of the community. So with that, I will entertain a motion...
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ventress Gibson.
Okay, I have a motion, may I have a second, please?
I'll make, I'll second it.
Okay.
I'm just slow today.
I have a motion and a second for Ms. Ventress Gibson. Any discussion, Mr. Martin? Mr. Watts?
No.
And Mr. Driscoll? Okay, vote, Mr. Driscoll?
No.
Aye.
Mr. Two?
No.
And I will cast the tiebreaker, and I will vote yea. So Ms. Gibson is the next interim member of town council. The vote is 3-2. Next item, Ms. McGuffin, is the town pool car discussion.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a retired police vehicle that has been used for the town hall vehicle, and the vehicle runs well, but we have had repeated problems with leaking from where we had lights and equipment removed from the car, and it has been taken in twice to look for these. We have patched things with silicone. For whatever reason, we cannot find where the water is coming in. I think multiple council members have experienced this, I know when Mr. Martin took it to BML, he said there was literally like a chunk of ice in the back floorboard. This last time that the mayor was getting ready to take it, the door was open and water just kind of rushed out. At this point, we have multiple people who are like, "I'm not using that anymore." The challenge for us is that our personnel policy requires that if there is a car available, that you have to take the car that is owned by the town, or otherwise you cannot be reimbursed for mileage. So I really, the council did not fund, staff didn't recommend, and the council did not fund buying a new car this year. So I really want to give council some options on this, if council would like to address it. Number one, the car could just be decommissioned. If the car was decommissioned, if there is not a car available, people can be reimbursed mileage. The second option is to change the personnel policy to allow people the option to either use the car or to get mileage. And then the third option is that you decide to purchase a car. I will say, long-term, whether the car is decommissioned or you change the personnel policy to allow people to use a car, long-term, the better solution is to actually purchase a replacement car for town hall, whether it's this budget year or another one, just because with mileage reimbursement rates being what they are, it does not take very many trips very far before those mileage expenses get pretty substantial. So if at some point, and again, this is completely a council decision, if y'all decide to, you know, do nothing, we will continue as we are, but we wanted to lay these options out because we've now had multiple council members who said they're not getting into that car again. So with that, I hand it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'd like to put in my two cents worth, and then I'll move on to the council. The car smells like, because of the water issues, when I opened the door and the water ran out the other day, and I sat in the driver's seat, it was soaking wet, it smells like mold, I mean, just mold, which is not healthy for anybody, but especially the staff, because they have, they have things they have to do, they're supposed to drive that car by the policy, because it has not been decommissioned. So their, you know, their choices get sick or drive their own car. And I know Mr. Watts got sick after driving it, Mr. Martin, I don't know if he got sick, but I know he went ice skating in the back of the car. But when I opened it up the other day, I couldn't even breathe when I sat down in the car. So I ask Ms. McGuffin to bring this, this is how this came to council, I ask, especially after the husband. So I'm gonna open this up to discussion. I have a suggestion of which one of the three that I agree with at this time, but I want to let the rest of the council have their time. So, Mr. Martin, I'm gonna start with him, since he went ice skating.
I feel it's a, it's a health hazard, and it's not, it's not worth doing anything else to, so I believe it's reached the end of its useful life.
Ms. Sweeten?
If I'm not mistaken, we had the vehicle you were mentioning now was a former police vehicle. Do we have one, it was suggested to the planning commissioner one time maybe, that we wait and once the next car is retired, use it as a staff car?
We'll deal with the same thing, probably, because of all the holes drilled in it and all of that stuff?
But I would imagine, I would say, I mean, we're looking at having to raise our water bills, there's talk of real estate taxes down the road, I just think we need to, we're not even sure what type of water situation we're gonna be in, whether we're gonna need storage for it, I just would rather err on the side of caution, maybe until this vehicle becomes available, you know, I'd never, I drive my own car, I pay my own gas, I know not everyone knows that, I just would err on the side of caution personally, so that's it.
Okay, Mr. Watts?
I agree with Mr. Martin, 100%, but we need to decommission that car now, because staff is at risk driving that thing, I don't want them by driving the thing. And Ms. McGuffin, what funds are in the current budget here to replace, to use?
If council wanted to replace the car at this point, then my suggestion would be just to appropriate funds from your general fund balance. As you know, you have a healthy general fund balance, so you can just appropriate an amount of money that you're willing to spend. Our goal would really be, we would not replace it with an SUV, we would do just a more economical, smaller, better, less mileage, reliable car.
Well, it would have to hold at least four feet.
Right, but you can get a, you know, a Corolla or Camry or, you know, something of that nature.
They're a long ways.
I'm sitting back at a Camry, not a Corolla. We have one of those, I know.
That's all the discussion I have, I just think we need to decommission.
Mr. Driscoll?
No comment.
Okay. So now I'm gonna throw it back out, we're all in, the decommission, and my suggestion, my personal thing was gonna be, I agree with Mr. Watts, it needs to be immediately decommissioned. I don't want the town to get put on a hook when, let's say, Ms. Morgan takes it to Fongville for work, or takes it somewhere, and then all of a sudden she gets sick from the mold and stuff, we're gonna be on the hook because we let her drive a car that we know is not safe. And I'm using you, I'm using you, Tracy, because, you know, you just went to Fongville for a thing, so...
And she wasn't driving.
I wasn't driving.
I know, but I know that, but I'm just, I'm making a, I'm making a point. So what I would like to see council do is decommission it, and then, in the near future, I would like for staff to get together and work out, look at different vehicle options and prices, and then come back to council.
What are we doing in the meantime?
It's, they'll, we'll get paid mileage.
Well, we need to take action on that.
No, we don't, if it's decommissioned...
Okay, okay.
Then they can do that, because it's not an available car.
Right.
But then, in the near future, I would like to be brought back to council, let them do their due diligence on a type of vehicle, and bring us back the price options and all that. Council, Ms. Martin, what do you think of that idea?
I agree.
You agree? I think I know your...
May I ask a question, were there any maintenance records on this, any receipts paid out to have it repaired? Or did that...
It went in, it went in twice trying to get this, and we replaced weather stripping on it, and had it looked at to try to get the holes patched, maintenance crawled over it, I mean, we have actually tried on this thing, and we cannot figure out for the life of us where this water is coming from, because we have patched holes, we have replaced the weather stripping around it.
Did you take it to an auto dealership? He wasn't, and did we have receipts?
Mr. Thompson did, I don't know offhand who Mr. Thompson took it to.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Watts?
What?
I'm asking you in favor of the decommission?
Oh, absolutely.
And then, and then have staff bring us back?
Yes.
Okay, we've all under that, so to make this formal, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call for a vote. I mean, even though I know what the vote's gonna be, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote, okay? Mr. Driscoll?
Aye.
Ms. Sweeten?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion.
Oh.
Vicky really wants a motion.
Okay, I'm sorry, Vicky wants a motion.
She's happier.
Okay.
All right, I'll make the motion.
Okay, we got a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Got a second from Mr. Martin. Now, we'll vote again.
Thank you.
Mr. Driscoll?
Aye.
Ms. Sweeten?
Aye.
And Mr. Martin. Motion is carried 4-0-0. We're straight on what I just said?
Yes, sir, we will bring you back information and options.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Next item is appointments, Ms. McGuffin?
You have three appointments that have, that are reaching the end of their term. Two of these are direct appointments by council, so I'm just looking for council to reappoint those folks, they are both willing to serve. That is Janine Casey on the EDA, and Manley Rucker also on the EDA, both willing to serve, so I would just look for an appointment for both of those. And then, the next one is June Driscoll's appointment on the Board of Zoning Appeals is also coming to the end of the term, however, that one is a recommendation to the Circuit Court. So that would be a recommendation from council to the court for the court to make the appointment. Finally, I do just want to note to the council that due to Mr. Cliff Hart moving, we will have a vacancy on both the Economic Development Authority and the Board of Zoning Appeals. Mrs. Hunt has already put out the information so that people will know about that and can apply for it, so we're not looking for that appointment this evening, but we'll be coming to you in the future on that one. So first motion would be for the appointment, reappointment of Janine Casey and Manley Rucker to the EDA.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to appoint these two individuals who have agreed to volunteer and stay on.
Any questions?
I have a motion from Ms. Sweeten, can I have a second? Second from Mr. Watts, is there any discussion among the council?
Yes, sir.
No, no comment.
Okay, okay, I'll just check it. Vote, Mr. Driscoll?
Aye.
Mr. Watts?
Aye.
And Mr. Martin. Motion carried 4-0-0.
The next motion would be for a recommendation to the Circuit Court for June Driscoll's reappointment.
Okay, for that, I will entertain a motion?
Make that motion.
Motion from Ms. Sweeten, can I have a second?
Second.
That was a second from Mr. Watts, discussion, Mr. Martin, Ms. Sweeten?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Driscoll? Vote, Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Watts?
Aye.
And Mr. Driscoll?
Aye.
Motion carried 4-0-0. Next is matters from staff, let's start here, Captain Robinson, you got anything to say?
I've got nothing.
Ms. Ruck, Ms. Tracy Morgan, what? Ms. White? Did you hear what I'm saying? Uh, Ms. Hunt?
Where did that come from?
I don't know, but when I said it, I knew it was wrong, so I was trying to correct, I'm sorry. Uh, Ms. Hunt?
Just quickly, we put the town council meeting recordings on the website, we're now putting the Board of Zoning Appeals and the EDA recordings on the show, starting the beginning of 2025 going forward.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kelly?
Sir?
Do you have anything you would like to add?
I don't think so, thank you.
Thank you for just sitting there and listening to us.
Thank you for having me.
Yes, ma'am, it's a pleasure always. And Ms. McGuffin?
The only thing I was gonna add is that we are rapidly approaching go date for our first responder celebration, which is the last Saturday of June every year. This one is going to be bigger and better than ever. Chief Watts has obtained not just a bounce house this year, but we're going to have an inflatable obstacle course for kids, as well as a foam pit. So we have a foam pit...
So we have a foam pit. It's like a giant pit of bubbles.
I'll push the phone, you like?
And...
Turn your ear, Nate.
We have been given permission to use this grassy field that is outside of the storage unit. So we're going to have like a whole kid area with the big obstacle course and the bouncing thing. And that will also allow us to have a grassy area where people can kind of set up chairs and everything else and give us a different space besides just sitting on the hot asphalt. So we're really looking forward to how this is going to go and we encourage everyone, you know, to attend.
Captain, can you check and see if anybody happened to sign the other sheet I made you guess about?
No, sir. How about you?
Okay.
Still one.
Yes, sir, good. Thank you very much. And matter for the council, Mr. Driscoll?
I have concerns about the way in which we select appointees when we have far higher number of appointees versus an under-council number of voting. Tonight, gentlemen to your right made the first, made the, you made your, made the motion just before I could make the motion. And consequently, the vote was two, zero, or two, zero, zero. And the mayor got to decide. There are other appointees out there that I'm sure would have had a, two people vote for them and they weren't even considered.
You still had a tie vote. You would have still had a tie vote.
Yeah, would it still have a tie vote?
Yeah.
And?
It was still not tied. He would have to break it.
Yes. Okay, what if Ms. Wheaton had decided to go if I had?
We're not going to play what ifs.
Okay.
We're not, we're not going to go there.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't think it should be a speed contest to approve.
This is, wait a minute, Kenneth, hold on. This is the way it's always been done, and this is the way we handle all of these. It's the way we do everybody. So just because it was five people, we let everybody know that we appreciated them. We had a chance to interview everybody. We didn't even have to do that by law, but we did. So we would learn everybody and know who they are. So this is the way it went tonight and this, you know, this is the way it happened. Mr. Watts?
Aye, Mr. Sir.
Ms. Wheaton?
Yes, I have a question of the police department. I noticed on the main...